I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank you for attending the full Board of Education meeting this evening on June 12th, 2019. We always like to start our meetings by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's great to see such a nice crowd tonight. Usually June, we don't have an attendance like this, so that's good. Sue, will you please take the roll call?
Sure. William Baumgart.
Here.
Cory Montehoe.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien. Karen Reincheck.
Here.
And Joseph Como.
Here. Thank you, Sue. Kurt is excused for this evening. And Sue, will you also please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. We're going to start off with bright lights tonight. We have our principal, Jason Sadowski, from Butler Middle School, here probably with a team to talk on AVID, AVID elective. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. One of the things that we just want to showcase is what AVID has done for the students over at Butler. We do have an AVID elective that we started this past year with our eighth graders, and excited to say that we are expanding that to seventh grade next year, as well as AVID Excel for our students that are English language learners. So I want to introduce Lynn DeWalt, who is our AVID teacher, and Lisa Zlinsky, who is also trained in AVID and teaches math in the AVID team, that these students go for their math. So with that, I'm going to, you guys can come on over here and if you want to introduce the students.
Good evening. It is such an honor to be here tonight, and I am so excited that we have just finished our first year. And I'm even more excited that I was able to bring along several of my AVID elective students who have recently graduated from Butler Middle School, who will all be moving on to high school next year, AVID. Just to give you a little bit of an idea, this was our first year implementing the AVID elective at Butler. We were honored to have 27 scholars. Of those 27 scholars, we had students that were part of the dual-language program. We had students that were part of the English language learning program. We had students that were part of our personalized learning program, our Quest. And we also had one student who was also part of the deaf and hard-of-hearing program. And as far as my part of the presentation goes, that's it. Because I know you don't want to hear from us. You want to hear from the kids. So what the kids and I decided we wanted to do is we wanted to take one of the biggest parts of AVID, and we wanted to model it for you tonight. And what we're going to have the kids do for you tonight is we are going to have them model a tutorial. And in true AVID fashion, that's what the kids are going to do. But before we do that, I'd like the kids to come forward, and I'd like them to introduce themselves to you. Come on over here.
Hi, I'm Noemi, a student in the AVID elective.
And where are you going to be going to high school next year?
North.
North.
Hi, I'm Bella Carmona, a student in the AVID elective, and I'm going to West High School next year.
Hi, I'm Morgan Sees, and I'm just graduated from the eighth-grade AVID. I'm going to North High School.
I'm Jackson Ibar, and I'm in the AVID elective, and I'm going to North High School.
I'm Natalie Goewen, and I'm going to North High School.
Yep. So as the kids get ready for their tutorials, if it's okay with you, we went through the actual AVID tutorial process.
Could you speak into the handheld microphone when you're talking away from? Yes, thank you.
So one of the...
Is it on? You're good.
So one of the things that the kids and I did tonight to prepare for this is we actually went through the process of preparing for a tutorial. One of the things that AVID does with our students is we help them really focus on how to go through the notes they take in class and identify areas of questions that they have to bring those to their classmates and to present their points of confusion and have their, you know, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, have their classmates and ask them questions to try to come up with solutions. So as the kids get ready, I'd like to show you what the kids actually generated for tonight so that you have an idea of really what the process is all about. All right, and we're going to get started right away.
Are we going to be tested on this?
Okay, go ahead. So a tutorial always starts with a point of confusion and a 30-second speech. So Bella, would you like to begin your 30-second speech?
Sure. So our initial question was, "How does AVID's mission statement benefit students in the Waukesha School District?" Vocabulary that we have to, that we need to note, right? Our question is AVID, which is advancement via individual determination, and the School Board of Waukesha, which is a group of local elected authority responsible for the provision and maintenance of schools. And what we know about AVID is that AVID is an elective class that we chose to take because we want to prepare, better prepared for the future. And then AVID's mission is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students to succeed in a global society. And then AVID is centered around teaching students WICOR strategies and tutorials to help students find answers to questions. My point of confusion, or our point of confusion, is how do students in the Waukesha School District benefit from being in the AVID elective?
All right, my amazing scholars, as she's writing up her point of confusion, would someone like to begin by asking her a question?
So like, what is AVID and what does AVID stand for?
So like, AVID is like a chosen class that helps us with our future and basically helps teach us about like college and like high school and stuff and things that we need to know, skills that we need to know for like jobs and getting ready for the things that we need to learn for the future. And it stands for advancement via individual determination, basically like getting better, like simplified, getting better individually, independently, like helping you with... for yourself and also helping others.
How has AVID helped you become a better student?
Well, AVID has taught us a lot of different skills. For example, we have our AVID binders, which help us with organizational skills. Like, it's like one big binder where everything's all together. And it helps us with things like, we also do focus notes. We learn how to take focus notes. And it's helped me take focus notes because I've seen progress in the notes that I take at school.
Do you think that would be useful to write in your notes?
Thank you. Does anyone else have another question?
Yes. Can you please tell us about some of the guest speakers' one field trip?
I've had one field trip to UW-Whitewater, and it helped us like kind of learn about the college experience and what it might be like when we get older. And we also learned about like getting into college and things that might help you get into college. And then we had a guest speaker, and it was actually the daughter of one of the teachers at our school. And she was a medical student, and she gave us like a little look into how it is in college and like the whole process and how difficult it might be and how like different things.
Can you talk to, can you talk about some of the team-building activities we did in AVID?
So we did, we've done a lot of team-building activities that kind of help us together as an AVID family. And we work together a lot and work on collaboration, which is part of our WICOR. And we, one of the team-building activities that we did, which was my personal favorite, was our paper chains, which we had a certain amount of time to like work together to try to make the longest chain. Getting to know each other and getting like used to working with each other.
So Bella, as you finish writing your last notes, I'm wondering, you came to us with a point of confusion about how do students in the school district of Waukesha benefit from the AVID elective? Do you feel that the questions that your peers have asked you today have helped you answer that question? Okay, so can you summarize your steps? Or can you talk about what you've come up with?
Yeah, so like basically, they've helped me like understand the different skills and things that AVID has taught us and helped us improve with. So like organization, like note-taking, and then getting ready to prepare for our future.
Awesome. Thank you, Bella. Thank you, team. And one last question for you, Bella. Are you looking forward to being in AVID next year as a high school student?
Yes, I'm really excited for AVID next year because I know that it can really benefit me with college.
What questions do we have of our students, if any? Mr. Baumgart. More of a comment than a question. I liked the fact that you presented what's actually going on in the classroom. I think that was a very powerful and direct way of getting us to understand what goes on in the AVID program and what benefits you get out of the AVID program. So I appreciate that very much. You know, board members are supposed to be careful about having favorites. One of my favorites is AVID. And I've seen this done at the high school level, and to see it being done now at the eighth-grade level was very impressive to me because you're doing the same kind of thing, working towards some of the same goals, and I appreciate that. Did, you mentioned your organization and note-taking. How about your personal feelings about this? Have you developed any improvements in your life or anything? I know I want the answer, but I'm not going to give it to you. How do you feel about yourself? Any of you?
Yeah, this can go, any of you can answer this question.
Noemi. Oh. I didn't know how to take notes, and it's really helped me because teachers are, they look at me like shocked that I have extra Cornell note sheets, which is how AVID teaches us how to take notes, in my binder. So I pulled them out during classes like science and especially science and math, and how to, and took notes on how things work, what the lesson was. So it really helped me just study because we also learned how to study, the 24 hours, 10 minutes, and seven days. So...
Let me ask you another question related to that. A year ago, when you were not in AVID, would you have been able to sit there and present that to me?
Not at all.
So what happened to you in the last year? Confidence, right?
Yeah, a lot.
And I think that's, we've seen a tremendous amount of confidence develop in the kids that have been in the AVID program. And I'm glad to see that you feel it's there too, even though I had to probe you a little bit, but that's okay. Thank you. Ms. Voight?
Very closely related to his comment is also a comment for myself. I've had a chance to work with the Les Paul seventh graders. And one of the things we do, if a student doesn't have a point of confusion, they present a point of confidence that a lot of times is something that another student would be having a concern about, but they understand that math concept or they understand, you know, something that the others might be struggling with. And I think this would have been a great example of a point of confidence in terms of the example that you shared. Very nicely done.
Mr. Montehoe.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So about like the point of confidence, so like in the beginning of the year, since we like, like as the year went on, like all of us started making points of confidence because like we weren't really learning anything new. But then our teachers in AVID told us that we weren't allowed to make points of confidence anymore if we already had made one already in the year. So then we would have to like actually put time in and make a point of confusion.
Great. Mr. Montehoe?
Need you to do it. Thank you. I have a daughter that attends your school, and I was just picturing, as you guys were presenting, how proud I'd be of her if she was to sit in a room like this in front of all these people and make such a presentation so clearly and to convey the message that you gave today about AVID. It's impressive. One of the life lessons I think you're learning and probably already have already learned is people, you'll deal with problems throughout your life, but to clearly identify that the problem, you guys call it a point of confusion, is half the battle. And then you work with your colleagues, which is your classmates, to use their collective knowledge and come with a solution. So it's a life skill that will benefit you into high school next year and throughout your life. So you should be very proud of what you've accomplished. I certainly am of all of you and your teachers and your principal are doing you very well. So good job.
Anybody else? Ms. Reincheck.
I just wanted to know, when you talked about confidence, why do you feel you're confident? I mean, all of you are, but why?
I feel that I'm confident, like because of the AVID elective, because like in previous years, I wouldn't want to like even present in front of a class. And now this year, like as soon as I heard about this presentation, I was like, I want, I want to do that. So it just helped me with a lot of things, like being able to speak in front of people and being able to just go up and do something.
I think I could relate to her too. Me taking the microphone right now shows how much I've like really wanted, how I've really grown, how I've learned to not be afraid to talk in front of people. And I just, I seem to be more open and less quiet on my thoughts. And during like class, I would ask questions that I really need, like I'm wondering, when before I got scared, I would be wrong. But now, as I ask questions, as I present now, I notice that I wouldn't have done this a year ago. I would be just really nervous. But yeah, it's really impacted me in a great way.
So is confusion a good thing or a bad thing?
Great question.
It's a good thing because you can, like the people, like the students, like at first, like I was embarrassed to like go up and like present because like I didn't want people to think that like I didn't know anything. But like lots of people had the same thing. So it was like good because it helps like you elaborate with other people on your same confusions, and it like just helps you like know and like elaborate.
And also like confusion is a good thing because you never know if somebody else in the class has the same question, and you can just be the one to ask for you and that other person.
Good. Yeah, confusion, confusion is a good thing. It's the first step in learning, right? I mean, when you're confused and you admit you're confused and you start to talk about it, that's that first step that you take in the learning process. So excellent, excellent job. You guys really presented yourself well tonight. Powerful example. We wish you luck as you're, as you're moving forward into high school and making that transition. Who's excited to go to high school? Come on.
They're going to miss me.
Well, we wish you luck and thank you for your presentation today. That was great. Moving on to our recognitions, I'd like to first start out by recognizing our newest board member, Cory Montehoe. Welcome to the board. Cory went through an appointment process, which, there were eight people, I think, that tossed their hat into the ring that had presented a resume and a cover letter to us as to why they thought that they were the person to fill in the position for Barbara Zink. And we also had an interview process with each of those people. And this board had elected Cory to join the board. And Cory's term will go through the rest of this year, and hopefully he'll be on the ballot then, beginning next year. So welcome, Cory, to...
Thank you.
To the board. And now we'll have Ms. Hedstrom present our Employee of the Month.
Good evening, everybody. The Employee Recognition Award for June 2019 is being presented this evening to Wendy Hamilton. Wendy, would you please join me? Wendy brought her posse here tonight. Wendy started in the school district of Waukesha in 1996. Her nominators begin by saying that Wendy has worked tirelessly to coach staff members during learning of the comprehensive literacy model. Do you know CLM? You've heard that, comprehensive literacy model. And also the writing aloud model. She is more organized and helpful than any coach they have worked with. Maybe they're biased, but those are not my words. Those are their words, okay? It is not unheard of, though, for her to reply to emails at 1:00 or 2:00 a.m. Stop that. She is the go-to for many staff members because of her extensive literacy knowledge and the rapport, trust, and respect she has fostered with so many staff members in the district, even the ones she's not responsible to be working with. Her expertise and experience make her a huge, all caps, huge asset to literacy teachers in the district. Her vision and leadership has moved the district in such a positive direction when it comes to literacy instruction and intervention. She's never one to dismiss a concern, problem, or obstacle a teacher might be having with the curriculum or the delivery of instruction. She has a skill where she's able to co-construct a solution or redirect to the solution and/or to get what really matters back to the writers and readers, our students. Some of Wendy's accomplishments are the complete revamp, improvement, and streamlining of the district's intervention program to ensure intervention across the schools is done with fidelity. She created from scratch a criteria for entrance into, to intervention and an identification process. She launched and supported the process and criteria to staff throughout the district. Wendy used her vision and influence to create a district literacy intervention team with an agenda that goes beyond 2023. She has molded and motivated teachers to become better literacy teachers through coaching, mentoring, and support. Wendy's plans, Wendy plans and delivers countless professional development seminars to encourage open conversations about the reading and writing process with teachers K-12. She is a positive and strong advocate for documenting and organizing student data. She encourages CIM teachers to keep data organized and comprehensive for the purpose of communicating about a student's progress to the parents, administration, and the universal teachers. Is that like a general teacher?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Classroom teacher.
Okay. That was a new word for me. Wendy is a valued committee member of the Wisconsin State Reading Association, where she works hard to bring information about early literacy throughout the state. She often presents at the Wisconsin State Reading Convention, where she demonstrates best practices and research-based literacy practices. Wendy is connected also to higher education professionals and organizations throughout the state of Wisconsin and beyond. On behalf of the school district of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate Wendy Hamilton on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award.
I'm just going to say a couple of things real quick. First of all, thank you very much. This is a really, really nice honor. I really appreciate it. Thank you to the middle school teachers who nominated me for this award. I thought they were kidding, and they weren't, so that was really nice. I also want to give a huge credit to our Teaching and Learning Department, who sees my role and roles of all the coaches as being really important because they understand the value of building teacher expertise. We ask our classroom teachers to do an awful lot. There's a ton on their plates, and there's always new learning and continued learning and refined learning. And they can't do it on their own. So I think the coaches play a really important role for them to be able to continue to grow. And credit to the teachers because they have to be vulnerable enough to let somebody else work with them and grow and learn together. So huge props to teachers that are willing and open their doors to the coaches that want to help them help our students. And finally, to my family, who, they deal with the 1:00 a.m., 2:00 a.m. things sometimes and thinks I'm crazy, but they know how much I love my work and I'm passionate about what I do. Been in this district over 20 years and wouldn't be anywhere else. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy. Very good. That puts a smile on the face, doesn't it? Wow, lot of responsibility. We do not have a student representative report tonight. I think the graduates are having fun at this moment, maybe even out starting their summer jobs right now. So I know Benjamin's working. We're trying to keep him out of trouble, you know, so... No, he doesn't get in trouble. He makes good decisions. And we're at the point of our meeting where we allow our citizens to address the Board of Education. And as has been past practice, we do limit the time, and we'll, we have five speakers signed up, so we'll allow three minutes from each person to speak. At the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Amanda will give you a signal, and you'll have 30 seconds to kind of wrap up. We expect that all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. And we also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. And also, in order to respect our speakers, please make sure that we've silenced our phones at this time. We do have five people signed up, and there were three people that wanted to kind of come up as a group, and that's okay. I don't mind that. I think we're going to start with whatever the order is. So whatever the three, I don't know, I think you're the last three that have signed up. But let's start with Kristi Witt. Is that a single, just one person?
No.
Oh, oh, okay. So why don't Kristi, why don't you and the three other two come up? And we'll give you nine minutes amongst yourselves, however you want to divide that up.
We just have a prepared statement we want to read.
I think we did that for our students last month. We had a bunch of students, and we kind of crammed them into one.
Okay. There are many matters at Whittier as parents we would love an opportunity to discuss with the board. But tonight, we are here to speak to you on one, and that's perception. We struggle to understand why Whittier has this lurking stigma attached to it. We see it when others in the district ask which school our students attend. We receive the grimaces, cringes, and awkward moments that come almost with a sense of pity for our children. It is puzzling, but more than anything, it is frustrating. It affects our enrollment and our school community. We want the board to hear our perspectives and consider how among all of the things that could be done to improve Whittier's image, your words, actions, and messaging are an easy and cost-free starting point. We watched the video from the June Teaching and Learning Committee with keen interest as there was presentation by our outgoing principal, Tahareh DeLeon. For those that were... For those that were not in attendance or not aware of the comments that brought us here, we would encourage you to watch the meeting and listen to Board Member O'Brien's exchange with Mrs. Deleon. For us, it is a prime example of how misunderstood our school community is. With regard to advanced students at Whittier, Mr. O'Brien first asked Mrs. Deleon the following. How are they not being held back in a student population where so much energy and time is focused on trying to make the rest of the population proficient? Are we giving the opportunity for those kids to excel? Mrs. Deleon responded, explaining while the interventions and class sizes may target the developing students, to help close the achievement gap, those same interventions allow for focused opportunities targeting high-performing students. Even after she answered the question and explained the focus and benefits provided to all students, Mr. O'Brien still questioned why efforts were not made at the district level to essentially encourage parents of advanced students to go elsewhere, specifically making multiple references to these students applying into STEM. Mr. O'Brien alluded to parents at Whittier being unaware of their ability to choice out of Whittier. This is one of the more painful portions of that dialogue. As Whittier parents, we have had school choice since the time we enrolled our students at Whittier. Our students were not held captive at Whittier. Our choice has been Whittier. That choice has provided our high-learning students a wonderful education, our average students a wonderful education, and our special-needs students a wonderful education. That choice has allowed our children to learn and develop in focused ways. How is it a board member would think we do not have that choice? Just as Mr. O'Brien wanted to ask about any outreach encouraging departures from Whittier for a better-suited environment as parents of those high learners, parents of average students, and as parents of special education students, we challenge this board to ask the alternate question. What outreach should be done to attract the students that are fortunate enough to reside within the Whittier closed enrollment area? Thank you. Parents and staff at Whittier have known for years the perception and image of our school is one of the biggest hurdles we face, yet it seems like it would be the easiest to solve. Mr. O'Brien's ease and willingness to suggest the district put forth effort into certain students leaving our school perfectly underscores our frustrations. It is hard for a school community to grow when people make opinions or assertions based on limited or short-sighted data. It is especially hard to disprove certain misperceptions when they may stem from opinions spoken from the highest level of our district or our board. Mr. O'Brien worried about high-achieving students being underserved at Whittier. He asked if those students are being held back while so much energy and time is focused on trying to make the rest of the population proficient. Mr. O'Brien spoke hypothetically about if it was his child labeled advanced. We are not here speaking hypothetically to you. I am speaking to you as a parent of a high-achieving student at Whittier. He has been at Whittier since kindergarten and just completed fourth grade. As a toddler, he appeared to be on a direct course to being the little boy labeled "curious and bright," while very disruptive and distracted. I had those concerns even after years of Montessori-based childcare and two years in a very well-respected private Christian pre-K program. It was at Whittier he developed into a reader. It was at Whittier his math abilities were tapped into. It was at Whittier his love of art was nurtured, and it was at Whittier he was exposed to a love of music. It was Jillian Miller tapping into his potential for advanced mathematics in just the first grade. It was Laura Zahn and Mara Appernix, working with a group of advanced readers in second and third grade. And this year, as a fourth grader, Sherry Gregor and Tana Sexton challenged him not just in reading and mathematics, but introduced him to a love of history and science. It is the staff and environment at Whittier that nurtured his abilities, inspired his skills, and helped develop him into a confident student with a true love of learning. I have no doubt the structure at Whittier, the smaller class sizes, the interventions in place for developing students and accelerated students were the keys to his success. This environment was not a hindrance to him. It was an environment that has fostered his success. All of that being said, his academic success represents only a fraction of his wonderful experience as a Whittier student. While being challenged academically, the greatest and most important lessons he has received were character skills such as empathy, compassion, and awareness, while learning in such a uniquely diverse environment. He has developed skills that will prove to be a far greater marker of success than any test scores or data you may choose to use as a reflection of our school. From my perspective, I would tell people that Whittier should be on their wish lists because of its diversity, because of its learning environments, because of its dedicated staff, its small class sizes, and the targeted approaches for each and every student in its building. Help us shift the narrative from why would a parent living in the Whittier district consider that school, to that of their being fortunate in that they get to choose Whittier. We know that some of the board members have been in our school, but have all of you. Have you observed our problems with access, parking, and a very dangerous traffic flow? Have you observed that if a handicapped or disabled family member wants to attend a concert or celebration for their student, their only access to the point of our school is through the custodian's office? Have you observed the fact that Whittier facilities, with the exception of the library, have been largely untouched since it was built in 1950? Have you considered any detrimental ripple effects of closing two neighborhood schools in the heart of our city to accommodate your STEM programs? Have you considered any substantial effort to make Whittier as desirable as any of the other elementary schools in our district? In the face of parents who represent the average learners, the advanced learners, and the special-needs learners at Whittier, and on the night that we anticipate you will be approving the hiring of our new principal, is our sincere hope that this board will realize and accept that Whittier students deserve more from each of you. This starts with dispelling dangerous and narrow-sided views of our school and its students. What message does it say when a board member gives the perception that certain students are better suited for Whittier than others? Mr. O'Brien's suggestion, combined with the silence from the board members surrounding him in that meeting, sent the wrong message. Quoting Martin Luther King Jr., "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." As parents at Whittier, the things said by Mr. O'Brien were disappointing, but it was the silence of those around the table with him that was most disheartening. It is hard to take your silence as anything other than the endorsement of his positions. Tonight, you will be asked to approve the hiring of our new principal. No other principal, staff, teacher, or student should come into Whittier and be forced to just accept the stigma and misperceptions that have existed for far too long. We're pleading with the board and district to draw on remarkable staff at Whittier. They are consistently accomplishing so much more when it's told it isn't enough. With a new principal coming on board, we implore the district to stop relegating Whittier as a student body that just doesn't compare with your other elementary schools. Embrace and celebrate the opportunities available to all students. Start collaborating on ways to strengthen the school from its student-staff physical structure and perception. And simply put, please stop the systemic weakening of our neighborhood school.
30 seconds.
Whittier students are resilient, dedicated learners representing economic, racial, and academic diversity unparalleled to any other school in the district. Whittier's staff functions as a formidable, cohesive team, inspiring, protecting, and educating each and every one of our students that it serves. Rhetoric that states anything other than that does nothing but add another barrier to these students' success. Invest in these students now at the elementary level, and you will receive dividends as they continue through our Waukesha schools. We thank you for your time. We appreciate you listening to our concerns. We're leaving copies of this statement with each of you. Included with our statement is information on each one of our households and our history with the district. We do not make these points lightly and are vested in our students and our school community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristi D'Angelo. Last month, I was here with a group of parents and students to address the cancellation of the AP Calculus BC class at Waukesha North High School for the upcoming school year. I want to begin by expressing my extreme disappointment in the utter lack of communication between the administration and staff and the parents and students over this whole ordeal. Upon learning of the potential cancellation of this class, the first thing we asked for was a face-to-face meeting with administration, staff, the affected students, and their parents. For reasons that still escape my understanding, you have refused and continue to refuse to have such a meeting. Had you simply sat down and talked to us and provided open, honest, and transparent communication, you likely would have been able to avoid much of what has gone on in the last six to eight weeks and the rather negative publicity this school district has as a result of it. That's not why I'm here tonight. I am here tonight to address your treatment of the six Waukesha North High School students who appeared at that meeting last month to express their own concerns over the cancellation of their math class for their senior year of high school. Your last-minute decision to cut the student time to address you from three minutes to two minutes was nothing short of cruel. Did you even stop to think about what it took for those students to appear before you? They were in the middle of AP exam testing. For my son, seven AP exams, to be exact. Yet he and the rest of those students took time out of their schedule to be here to talk to you. They also took time to practice and write what they wanted to say so they could appear in a manner and present in a manner that was concise, respectful, and coherent. They spent hours preparing their remarks to fit within your prescribed timeframe. Mr. Como, you knew at the start of that meeting how many citizens wanted to speak that night. At 7:00, you easily could have told those students that you were cutting their time. They would have then had at least 45 minutes to an hour to regroup and prepare their remarks. You chose not to do that. You intentionally and purposefully waited until the last minute so the students had no time to regroup. Please don't think for one second that that was lost on them. They are smart kids. They heard your message loud and clear, and what they heard was that you don't care. You couldn't spare an additional six minutes of your time to hear them out. I can't imagine anyone more important for you to listen to than the students that you are supposed to be serving and protecting. And they were here begging for a math class, no less. You should be ashamed of yourself. You owe every single one of those students an apology. They deserve the right to be heard. They still deserve the right to be heard. The good news is, you actually have another opportunity.
30 seconds.
It's my understanding, and again, since the communication has been so atrocious, I could be wrong, but that they are exploring a third option for this class, a remote or satellite option. If that is successful, it could mean great things for this district. If you want that class to be successful, why not go to the students and ask them how you can make it successful? Give them some ownership in the process. Listen to how it will be helpful to them. Bring them in rather than shutting them out. You have the opportunity to do better. Do better. They deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. D'Angelo.
Good evening. You know, last month when I came in here, I was surprised not to see Barb, and I want to talk about that. You know, I've been coming here for eight years, and I've enjoyed Barb's getting to know her, her friendship, and just talking with her. I can't say I always agreed with Barb. I respectfully disagreed with her on a lot of things, you know, but as Solomon wrote, you know, as iron sharpens iron, so one man sharpens another. That doesn't mean you're going to be all nice at times. It's clashing of ideas and pinning things out. But I never had a harsh word for her, and I never spoke, would ever speak disrespectfully of someone like that, who I disagree with. You know, it's just a matter of disagreement, and we can, sometimes, as they say, agree to disagree, but we have to figure out where truths lie and where opinion is taking root. And I enjoyed that with Barb. She was a nice person, and Barb was very proud of this board. It was in her heart, and it was apparent that it was in her heart. And the first time I really sat and talked to her, she talked about how hard she worked for this district, and she has put a lot into this district, and this district meant the world to her. And now she starts a new chapter in her life, and I want to wish her a fair due to Barb. She was a great person, and I wish her the best in this next chapter of her life. I know what it takes to be on this board. I know there's a lot more than what's seen here. There's a lot of meetings, and there's a lot of phone calls. I don't call a lot of you because I know that there's a lot of time that you spend with people, and it's your time, and I understand that, and I get that very much. You're not going to make everyone happy all the time. And usually, when you get a phone call, it's probably that they're not happy with you. So, I get that, and I want to thank her for the many years of service that she's spent on this board and the time that she sacrificed here. Again, so anyways, have a good night, please.
Those are the folks that have signed up prior to the meeting. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this committee at this time or this board at this time? Okay, thank you for your comments. Moving on to minute approval, we do have five minutes of approval that we have to approve. On May 8th, a regular board meeting. May 20th, an executive session that dealt with expulsions. On May 21st, there was a special board meeting. On May 28th, there was an executive session which dealt with expulsions. May 29th, there was a special board meeting. I have a motion for approval of minutes.
I saw move.
Moved by Mrs. Voight. Signed by?
Second.
Amanda? Any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the vote.
Cory Montehoe.
Epstein.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 701, Sue. Moving on to our communications, Dr. Gray, did you have any?
Yes, I have number one. First one is from Dave Sternig, Commissioner of the Classic Eight Conference, and he's congratulating Waukesha North High School for being the recipient of the Classic Eight Sportsmanship Award for Boys Golf and Baseball. The second letter is also from Mr. Sternig, congratulating South High School for being the Classic Eight Sportsmanship Award for Boys Golf, Boys Tennis, Softball, and Baseball. My third letter is also from Mr. Sternig, congratulating Waukesha West High School for being the Classic Eight Conference Sportsman Award for Boys Golf and Girls Tennis. And then finally, also again from Mr. Sternig, he's congratulating North High School for being the overall Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award Champion. And he cites a couple of different coaches here. I'll make this really quick. Girls Volleyball, Megan Miller. Girls Tennis, Heidi Vanderbusch. Girls Cross Country, Joe Warner. Girls Golf, Adam McDonald. Hockey, Roger Alesworth. Wrestling, Matthew Nurr. Boys Golf, Dan Knuth. Boys Tennis, Paul Fitzgerald. And Baseball, Don Rudowski. So, these are all the coaches that helped the school win the overall award. So, congratulations to all those folks.
That's good news. That's great news. Diane, do you have a Waukesha Education Foundation report?
Yes, I do. We've had a very, very busy May in the Waukesha Education Foundation world. We welcome Janika as our new intern from Carroll University, and we have found a space for her to work here at the Lindholm Building. One of Janika's first tasks was to join me on May 21st to capture the surprise responses and sincere appreciation of our team of WEF recipients, as our team of WEF representatives visited 16 schools plus Lindholm to deliver our big checks totaling $35,400 to our 2019 WEF grant recipients. Some of the images that were captured that day appeared in an article that was in The Freeman, and I do want to mention proudly that one of the recipients was, is in our audience this evening, the recipient of a $1,200 grant to address the unique learning needs of our special education students at Whittier. And it's, I have to say that I have been the WEF rep to Whittier, the principal recognition kind of tie, and this is not a first to be receiving a grant there. They do a lot of really innovative things, and we're very proud of the things that you do. I also am very proud of the fact that I got to deliver our largest grant, which was to the students over at Les Paul. We delivered a check for $3,300 to Eric Hess at Les Paul for the Vex Robotics Program. And after our discussion last month about if I could do anything about getting an award related to the Core Robotics, I didn't have anything to do with it, but it was really fun to be able to deliver the check, so. We will be sharing the 33 success stories this summer and fall on social media and on the WEF website, so please continue to stay tuned for these and many more examples of wonderful things that are going on in the district. Our fundraising efforts have been re-energized, as I mentioned last time, when we realized that we could only fund 22% of the 154,000 worthwhile innovative staff requests. This month, we welcome Educators Credit Union as our sponsor to help us with that funding kind of concern, and we thank all of you who ran, walked, or participated in our WEF Wellness Fair on May 11th and the fundraising activities that went along with that. And we also invite you to enjoy a day of golf on August 7th at Western Lakes, or you can just come to dinner, which is more my style, and the silent auction and live auctions that go along with that event. You can go to the WEF website for the Events tab and register soon to join in the fun of that event. WEF Board members were also pleased to present many scholarships at North and South Honors Night on May 22nd and West Honors Night on May 28th. We'll be recognizing our scholarship recipients, scholarship donors, and business partners at the Partners in Education Reception to be held on July 23rd from 5:30 to 7:00 at Tuscan Hall. So, this is a variation on the So, this is a variation on the Partners event that we've had in the past. This is going to focus on our scholarship recipients, the scholarship donors, and all of our sponsors, all of our partners. So, if you can join us on July 23rd from 5:30 to 7:00, we would appreciate your involvement, your recognition of the many things that are going on in those regards, and you'll be getting a formal invitation in email soon. We have selected our 2019 WEF Awards corporate partner, community partner, and the person who will be, who has truly demonstrated a lifetime of excellence in education. Those recipients will be announced soon, and we'll be recognized at the WEF Evening for Education, a new name for the celebration of excellence, our Evening for Education on November 14th. So, save that date as well. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Always exciting stuff happening at Waukesha Education Foundation.
Thank you.
Yes, very good. Moving on to our Charter School and Program Report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes, I have some very positive things to report this evening shortly. East High School, you may have seen this in Connect, but it's worth mentioning anyway at this time of the year. They established a senior recognition event this year. They celebrated the accomplishments of 22 graduating seniors. Principal Tiara Rogers and her staff awarded certificates and most, quotation marks, most likely two special awards to the students in front of their families and friends. This brings some additional and deserved success, a focus on the success of these young people who have worked very hard to reach this point, and this is in addition to their already acclaimed improvement in their attendance at that school. Secondly, regarding Whittier High School, I had reason to go over there and chat with Taree last week about a couple of things, try and fix some things. By coincidence, I got there at the same time that they were running their talent show. And I am quite simply going to say it was just so much fun and so great to sit in there and watch the enthusiasm of those students, both those that are onstage and those that were just watching. It was just a fun, fun event, and I give those kids a lot of credit for being up on stage and struggling with some of those things, but it was good stuff. And Blair, I'd like to point out, maybe you remember this, but May 17th, the Blair, the last Blair Flair was held. With the luck of the good weather that Ida arranged for and the tremendous attendance that we had there, this was another great event. Big thank you to all who put this together. And then lastly, and this isn't even on the script you have in front of you because it happened today, I had the opportunity to visit the sale program going on over at West High School for our staff, and there's about 250 people, I think, in attendance there. Remember, this is summer break now, so this is, this is, that's impressive all by itself. But then, as you visit or go around from room to room and listen to the, not arguments, the discussions that were going on among the staff to get things done, it just really tells you a little bit about the enthusiasm that our staff has to get the right thing done, and they're going to do it. So, quite simply, that's four positives that I have to report on this month, and it's a good way to start the summer, right? All right.
Excellent. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate that. Moving on to our consent agenda. Darren, we have quite a list of public gifts this month, don't we?
Yeah, 11 gifts. Waukesha West received $1,000 for, from, just for kids to be used towards a purchase of a van for our special need students. Paul and Kathleen Omen gave Les Paul Middle School $4,000 for math, science, and technology integration in the classroom. SPX Transformer Solution gave WEPA $750 to be used as needed for any equipment, technology to help continue and improve their engineering program. Clearview Plumbing gave South High School $700 for the baseball program. Waukesha City gave two gifts totaling $1,150 to Waukesha South for project graduation. Gregory and Kathleen Schneider gave Waukesha South $600 for the girls' track, dance, team, and golf programs. An anonymous donor gave $1,000 to Waukesha South for the boys' golf program. Madison Symphony Orchestra gave $500 to E-Achieve to purchase additional online resources for music classes. The Kiwanis Club gave $2,200 to the Transition Academy to purchase 11 WTA Exciter iPads. Metal Era and Metal Tech each gave our MADE program $3,500 to upgrade, repair, purchase equipment and other projects, and Kevin and Sandra Corthas gave $3,000 to North High School to be divided between the choir, drama, and marching band programs.
Wow, that is quite a list. A number of us have been on this board a long time. That's definitely a record, and how many, what's the total, Darren? You're the finance guy.
Um, yeah, I'm not good with that.
Just kidding, man. It's over 20 grand.
It's gotta be well over 20 grand.
Over $20,000 was donated to our schools this last month. Thank you for your generosity, and I think that speaks volumes for each of those schools and what the teachers and the administrators and what the students are doing at each of those schools. So, thank you for your generosity. We appreciate that. It's a good way to end our school year. Thank you, Darren. I give you, should I give you some credit for that?
No, you.
All right. Okay, your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have an opportunity in a bit. Included in the items for approval are the decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on May 20th and on May 28th. Confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsion was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included under item number 1H. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the end of the regular board meeting. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's decision. Okay, does anybody wish to have anything set aside at this time? Amanda, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Sir. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of 20 resignations, one leave of absence, and 38 new or modified teacher contracts. The information provided in your packet and addendum was placed at your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Signed by Mr. Dietz. Discussion? I'd like to make one comment. This is Mrs. Hedstrom's last meeting, and you have served us brilliantly for a number of years, and we thank you for that, and you will be missed. There's many other teachers and administrators that have retired, decided to retire this year. We thank them too, and you recruited some of them, and, you know, maybe not all of them because they've been with the district longer, but you've been involved with them for all those years, so thank you for your service, and thank you for the services of all those who have decided to perhaps make a change in life at this time. So, and we wish you luck, Chris.
Thank you.
Can we applaud?
Oh, I think.
Not that she's leaving, but we love to work with her.
Any other further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 801, Sue. Moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Gray.
Well, our graduations are all in the book, and they all went well, and I'd like to thank the board members and administrators who were able to attend and participate in those. That adds a lot to the ceremony, so, and I would just, those of us who are at South, I hope you now appreciate the 10 o'clock start time instead of 2:00 PM when it's about 40 degrees warmer in the fieldhouse. So, it was still, it still got pretty warm in there, but I think the staggered times have been great, especially for those families who have kids in different schools. With the, with the growth of the academies and so on, it's not unusual to have families with students in different, different locations, and I know those parents appreciate it, so. I'll add some things on sale also. We had 235 staff there today working very, very hard. We have one more day tomorrow. Again, they'll be working on their, their achievement plans for their respective schools, and very important work, and I was very impressed with, with the work that was going on, especially in the breakout sessions, and the high level of people really sticking to what they needed to do throughout the, throughout the entire day. So, very good. Our board signs, we have new board signs, and they are compliments of Andy Weber, who's a teacher of South Engineering and Tech Ed, so.
They're great.
Yeah. They're different from, from the other ones, but they're, they do look very, very nice, so.
You didn't, well, we're on the list.
You've got the old style.
Yeah. We're on the list.
You just, yeah.
You know it's real now.
You know what you're doing when you don't get a new nameplate.
Very good.
You get to take that with you tonight.
Yeah. We, this starts, this week, I believe, starts our summer hours here, so we do have some different schedules throughout the summer. Some employees are working for, for 10-hour days and some are working five. So, probably, if you need to connect with someone Monday through Thursday, might be your best, best opportunity. And I would also like to say a thank you to Chris Hedstrom, too. It was, it was pretty tough to recruit her here, but she, she came, and she's done a wonderful job, and I know our administrative team will definitely miss her. She's really done a lot of good stuff for us, and, you know, we kind of are proud of the fact that we've really not had any layoffs in the last 11 years, and a lot of that is Chris's work with her staffing configurations, and be able to move people where we need them without having to go to a staff reduction situation. So, thank you, Chris, for all you've done, and.
That's actually amazing when you think about the reductions that we've been through and the number of people that we have in this district.
Yeah.
15, 16, 1700 employees, that's, that's amazing.
Yep. Okay. And finally, one other, I'd like to remind people, the best school PR, the best you can do is parents speaking passionately about their school. That is priceless. There is, nothing even comes close to that, so it's great to hear that, and I think that's something we'll certainly encourage with all our schools, not just, not just one or two here or there. I think we'll, we'll look at all that. So, I guess I would say thank you for those, those words of encouragement, and we'll continue to make sure we have parents speaking passionately about all our schools. That's my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gray. Moving on to our committee reports. As I commonly say, this is where all the heavy lifting gets done, is at the committee level, and we rotate which committee gives the reports first, and this month, we are starting with the Policy Committee, given by its chair, Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you, Joe. Well, I'm a little bit disappointed that I don't have a longer report to give on policy because if I can do that at the beginning before people get all tired, those long ones. But I just got a short one tonight. We have two policies that are action items that I will cover, and neither of them are terribly difficult. First is a revision to Policy 5341, Emergency Medical Authorization. This policy has been revised to acknowledge that the emergency medical authorization forms might be maintained in electronic files or a student management system. Quite simply, this added a few words to the policy as existed, that already existed, adding the terms physical or electronic files or student management system, something we are very capable of doing. I will therefore move for approval of the revision to Policy 5341, Emergency Medical Authorization as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Signed by Mrs. Voight? Discussion?
Again, this is a pretty simple one.
All right, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 801, Sue. Bill?
Okay. We also have a revision to Policy 5540, the Schools and Governmental Agencies. This policy has been revised to reflect that a school official may attempt to contact the student's parent after law enforcement personnel question a student, unlike, unless specifically requested not to because such contact would unduly impede the investigation. The addition of the word "attempt" was included because school personnel do not have a requirement to reach the parents when the law enforcement people are questioning a student. This was brought up at the previous month. We wanted to do some further digging on it to make sure that everything was legal. The response, Joe Cook, is everything panned out okay, right?
Yeah, I ran this policy by legal counsel, and they said it's the decision of the board if they would like to keep the language as is presented tonight. I also checked with our administrators, those administrators who have been here for a substantial amount of time, 10-plus years, and this has been the consistent practice in Waukesha is to call after the questioning would have happened. So, our practice has never been to call before, so what you have in policy is consistent with practice, and it does pass a review by our legal counsel.
So, given that, I would move for approval of the revision to Policy 5540, the School and Governmental Agencies as presented.
It's been moved by Mr. Baumgart. Is there a second?
I saw move.
Signed by Mrs. Voight?
Second.
Any further questions?
Yeah.
I recall our conversation at our last full board meeting. I'm glad that we dug a little deeper into this, and I think it was a good question. I do agree with what we're going to move forward with, with what we've been doing consistently. Yeah, I mean, if, if it passes. So, I, I do favor the current language on this. Other discussion? Yes, Cory?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm coming in here somewhat midstream, but I am, was there for the policy meeting this past, or this week. I just have to vote my conscience in this one, and I, it's a discussion that I'm jumping in half.
Can you talk maybe into it a little bit more?
I'm sorry. Sorry. Just from a policy standpoint, I don't support the change, but I don't think it'll affect the outcome of the vote today, so just want to make that clear.
We always have to vote our conscience.
Yes, sir.
Conscience, yep. Mm-hmm. What we believe is best. Other discussion? And that's why we have to agree to disagree on this board respectfully, because we don't always agree, so. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Nay.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 71, Sue. Bill?
Thank you. Just a couple of points to share with you. One on an upcoming, Policy 2431, you don't have to write this wrong, but there's a Policy 2431, Interscholastic Athletics and District Activities.
District Activities.
Is coming forward in the future, probably in July. It's, it's going to be, it's a big thing that our middle school and high school athletics directors and activities directors have gotten together on a number of things. No big significant changes, but drawing attention to the fact we do things at the middle school level which we wanted to include in this, this process. You'll be getting this hopefully in the July meeting, and it's, you'll want to go over it when you get it in the packet. Another one, we had Karen, Karen Reinacek brought this up last month about Policy 5511, Dress and Grooming for Students. Policy was reviewed at our May 21st Policy Committee Meeting, and, and there was no recommended changes to be made to it. I want to point out, reminder that the policy exists, that we have a dress and grooming policy. It is in place, but the specifics of that policy are moved into the superintendent's responsibility in the guidelines. So, and it's at that level that we deal with the dress codes and things that would be going on. Each principal has, has a assigned responsibility for the dress codes at their school. And the next Policy Committee Meeting is scheduled for July 16th at 4:00 PM.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Appreciate that. Moving on to our Technology Committee, and before we do that, Bill, I think you're the only chair that's the same from last year's chairs. I think all the other chairs are new.
Well, thank you. I got some kind of seniority there, didn't I?
You bet. You bet. And our new Chair of our Technology Committee is Mrs. Voight.
And we did not meet, so I have no report.
You had like two days or something like that to me, right? Thank you, Diane. Moving on to our Finance and Facilities Committee, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on Monday, June 10. There are two action items, three information items, and two discussion items on the agenda this evening. The first action item is the Approval of Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance Contract. The Committee was presented the renewal of the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance Contract for the 2019-20 school year, which provides legislative counsel regarding matters of mutual interest with other districts in our region. The Committee approved the contract as presented, and I so moved.
Is there a second to that?
I second the motion.
By Ms. Voight? Discussion? Ms. Voight?
I had the good fortune to actually attend a meeting of the Southeastern Wisconsin Schools Alliance yesterday morning in Brookfield, and I found it very interesting to have an opportunity to hear our, not lobbyists, but legislative liaison, report to us directly from Madison, and to have two guests that were there, Alan Vorsick of the, who writes a Sunday education column for the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and Charles Franklin, who is the Director of the Marquette Law School pole since 2012, give some insights into the strategy concept of how can we better communicate the needs of education to the, to the greater community? You know, with only 28% of registered voters in Wisconsin having kids in schools, how do we make a case for the fact that, you know, it's worthwhile to have public education available, especially in the context of developing a stronger workforce for, for our businesses in the future? So, a lot, a lot of good ideas that hopefully can help us as we build our new committee structure for communication with legislators.
Other discussion, Mr. Baumgart?
Just a simple question. I know we've been doing this for years, and I believe in it. It's $3,200 this year. Is that the same, or did it go up a little bit?
I think it's the same as last year.
Has been, okay. Okay. That's fine. No problem with it.
Other discussion? And we have been a member a long time, as you had mentioned this, Mr. Baumgart, and I think the services, I, Mr. Gray, Dr. Gray, you had mentioned that you think it's probably one of the biggest bangs for the buck that we get.
Well, it is. I mean, they, they have, I think, you know, Terry Phillips, Executive Director, does a wonderful job, but it's, they also have a law firm that they employ, who has a, I guess, a school district or school lobbyist that also works on our behalf. But through that organization, we get information pretty much before it comes out in the media or, or other sources. So because of the, that relationship with the, the law firm, we get that information almost immediately. And that's, that's very helpful, especially sometimes we have some very tight timelines on when we want to communicate with our legislators on things, and that's been very helpful.
So. Other discussion? Questions? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on approving the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance Contract?
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Deetz.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Pat?
All right, our second action item is the 2018-19 Budget Amendments. At the time the budget is adopted, the budget contains the administration's best estimates of the district's revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year. As the year proceeds, additional information becomes available that impacts the sources available to the district and the planned uses of the funds. The Committee approved the 2018-19 Budget Amendments as presented, and I so moved.
Is there a second to that? Is there anybody, Mrs. Reinacek? Discussion? Questions? All right, Sue, let's take a roll call vote on those amendments.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Greg Deetz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero?
All righty, our first information item is the Monthly Budget Update. The Committee was presented the budget report for the month of May. $1,910,190 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $9,727,727 was expended during the month. There was $513,646 reported in the Special Education Fund Revenue, and $2,446,856 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget production, projection in other areas. The next information item is Facility and Activities Scheduling Calendar, which is called Our School Today. Jess provided a demonstration of the calendaring system, Our School Today. The system provides more efficiency across the district in scheduling events, managing setup needs, and invoicing. Our third information item was a referendum update. Darren Clark provided a copy of the detailed construction schedule set to begin this week at 11 schools. The first draw of $45 million will close on June 13. Periodic financial statements will be provided in the future updates. For discussion items, we discussed the Facility Use Policy and Fees. The Committee and Administration reviewed the Facility Use Guidelines and Fee Schedule originally brought forth in December, to make sure we are on the same page as we enter the new fiscal year. We also discovered the Whittier Elementary Temporary Classrooms, those are the ones that are behind the school. The Committee discussed the condition of the temporary mobile classrooms behind Whittier Elementary. It is the Administration's recommendation that these structures be removed, and the Committee concurred. Is there any discussion on that?
Isn't that space now used for before or after?
Yeah, it's just wraparound care, but we do have the ability to bring that inside the building. We just felt that that was more appropriate for that.
Okay.
Those, those units are, and I saw, and that's the problem, when you, when you use, when you make temporary housing permanent, it just, it doesn't go well. I mean, they're not, they're not built to last for long.
I believe that. That building was there a long time, longer than I've been on the board, and that's a long time.
Yeah.
And I was kind of surprised about it then. Okay, just wanted to be, no, we would, we would be able to take care of what we're using it for inside.
Oh, most definitely. We have the room, and it's just a more appropriate use.
Fine.
Yeah. Anything else?
Amanda?
Isn't, aren't those rooms used for a clothing shelter, or house for, extra supplies for students and families in need? Where is that going to be moved to?
Inside the school.
Inside the school?
Yeah, everything will be moved from that into, into the school.
Great.
Darren?
Tim Williamson is actually working with the fire department to come up, because of the flammable nature of clothes, to come up with a solution inside the building. We also talked about, you know, Whittier's enrollments, probably 225 next year or somewhere. A building that size, square footage-wise, in our, you know, in our district, holds three to 400 kids, so we think there's room, so we can maintain those services, but bring them into a building. I mentioned to the Committee that I just, those mobile, or I don't know what you call them, side-by-sides are rentable classrooms that were rented literally decades ago, I think, under the Reagan Administration, probably. They don't meet any standard that we would set on a school building. And I think it came down to, anything that was surrounded by hay bales, I don't see as be suitable for students in this district, so.
Good. Other discussion or comments on either the Whittier Temporary Classes, Classrooms, or the Facility Use Policy and Fees? I just, I just, I just had one thing, and Darren, would you mind going through, fees in general, we've been trying to reduce for our parents and our constituent, you know, our parents. And these fees deal specifically with facilities use, like on weekends and after hours. Can you kind of go through what those changes are?
The fees themselves, we, there's pretty much four groups, or there is four groups still, and that's what we had before. The first group is district-related activities, and they, obviously, those buildings were constructed to serve our students, so they take priority in, in scheduling. The next tier is community youth groups that are serving our students, but under their own platform or name. The third group, you get into Park and Rec and governmental-type agencies, or a YMCA group that is still serving our community, but it might be adult services and, so there's a separate tier. And then the fourth tier is for-profit, for-profit organizations that might want to rent some of our facilities. We don't have a whole lot of that type of activity going on in our, any of our schools on a regular basis. There might be some onesie-twosie ones here and there, but the, the biggest point of the, the rollout of our school and the software we have now, is we now can better track who's in our building, how much use are they, we can invoice automatically or electronically. But also, it provides clarity to them, because they get an estimate of their costs on the front end. So the, the fee schedule, we did some changing to the custodial rate and things like that, but the numbers themselves really didn't change that dramatically.
We simplified them, though, right? So we didn't have to keep track of how.
Yeah, we tried to simplify it and create a fee structure that fits into the Our School invoicing software. Before, it was all manual, all paper. You might get the requests for facility use one day, but the custodial timesheet may not come in until two weeks later. And it was, it was just, I don't think we did a very good job invoicing, not because of lack of effort or desire, but the flow of information was just so hit and miss. So it is, it is a lot simpler, and actually, it's been in use since the beginning of the school year. I think we started with the fall season, and so the groups that are out there are pretty well-versed in, in the software now. But we just brought it back to finance. Obviously, we've had some facility use conversations over the last few months, just to get everyone back to a benchmark, so we can, and move forward from the last several months of conversation.
Thank you for that. Anybody else on these two items? Okay, Pat?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report. Our next FNF meeting is on Monday, July 8, 5:30 in this room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Teaching and Learning, given by Mr. Deetz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held on June 4, 2019, at 6:00 P.M. We had one action item at our June Committee meeting that is being brought forward to the July Full Board Meeting to meet DPI statute requirements that relates to the School District of Waukesha's academic standards. There were four information items that appear on the agenda for the Teaching and Learning this evening. The first informational item, Graduation Date Proposal. The high school principals put together a proposal to move up graduation for the 2019-2020 school year. Currently, the last day of classes is listed as Tuesday, June 9, 2020. Typically, students take their final exams up until the last day of school. Seniors would have their last day of school two days earlier, or on Friday, June 5, 2020. Exams would be completed on Friday, and the schools would hold graduation ceremonies on Saturday, June 6, 2020. Second informational item, Whittier Achievement Gap Reduction, or AGR, Grant Update. Whittier Principal, Mrs. DeLeon, was at the meeting to provide information to the school board about Whittier's Achievement Gap Reduction, AGR grant. One of the requirements in receiving the grant for small class sizes in the primary grades is to present twice a year in order to keep our school board updated and informed on achievement progress. Whittier staffs at 18 students or less in grades kindergarten through third. Achievement goals were met in grades K and 1, but not in grades 2 and 3. The third informational item, District Year in Review. Jody Landish and Joe Cook presented an end-of-the-year review describing district progress and coherence across our system. Fourth informational item, Discipline Committee Update. Joe Cook updated the Teaching and Learning Committee on the district-wide discipline discussion that started back in January. During the Waukesha One Professional Development that occurred in January, Dr. Gray held listening sessions with staff to listen to concerns and to also hear about what was going well in the district. During these sessions, the topic of student discipline and behavior became a consistent theme. As a result, the district facilitated a district-wide discussion and planning on student discipline and student behavior. Dr. Cook summarized the actions around what was done this year and reviewed future work around these topics. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee Report this evening. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 3.
Thank you, Mr. Deetz. Moving on to Safety and Security, given by Mrs. Reinacek.
We have no information tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Again, that was, the committee assignments were made just a few days ago, so a couple, committees weren't able to meet in that amount of time, so. Our Human Resources and Compensation Committee, the new chair is Colonel Bryan, but he was excused tonight. Amanda, will you please give that report for us?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
The first action item is Approval of the Recommended Candidate in the Contract for the Position of Principal at Whittier Elementary. Oh, it's bothering me. I was looking for my paper. The Administration is recommending Brandy Hart for the position of Principal at Whittier Elementary. Throughout her principalship at St. Anthony's School, Miss Hart has experienced leading an urban school culture while maintaining an environment of high expectations, both behaviorally and academically. Her leadership philosophy is no excuses with empathy. Miss Brandy Hart values a positive school culture, collaboration, and high expectations for all. She is a principal who creates an environment of collaboration among staff in, in their development and meeting, meeting teachers with different, different, differentiate.
That's right.
Differentiated opportunities, excuse me, to grow in their capacity in order to increase a student achievement. Mrs. Brandy Hart has been an elementary teacher, a dean, an assistant principal, and most recently, has been a principal at St. Anthony's School in Milwaukee for the past four years. She started out her teaching career in Clark County in Las Vegas, but has been at St. Anthony's for 12 years. Miss Hart is a Waukesha resident. Mrs. Hart received her master's degree in educational leadership from Cardinal Stritch University, and her bachelor's of science in elementary education from Winona State University. Mrs. Hart's resume and contract are provided in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to middle-management policy. I move to approve the recommendation and contract of Brandy Hart for the position of Principal of Whittier Elementary School.
Is there a second to that? Is there anybody, Mr. Baumgart? Discussion? Mr. Baumgart?
I think she was trying to read through the gaps or something, but she was at the sale meeting this morning, or today.
Yes.
And very pleasant. I met her, a chance to meet with her briefly, and look forward to seeing her go to work. Well, she went to work.
She's before, she's working before, before we've hired her.
Yeah, well, yeah. Very nice.
Other comments, questions? Yes, Amanda?
At the HR and Compensation Committee meeting earlier, it was shared with us that the Hiring Committee there at the school, which consisted of the teachers, staff, and parents, had all unanimously, unanimously, I apologize, my big words are not coming out tonight, unanimously agreed upon her as the candidate. So that, coming from the parent voice and the teacher voice, was definitely heard by the committee.
Thanks.
Glad to see so many people applying for our principalship positions. I think that speaks volumes on our district, that we want people, or people want to be working here in Waukesha, at, at our great schools. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on approving Brandy Hart as the new principal of Whittier.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Deetz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Joe Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero. Congratulations, Brandy.[1772.94] Congratulations, Brandy. And we do have another principalship to consider. Amanda?
Yes, sir. The approval of recommended candidate for, and the contract for the position of principal of South High School. The administration is recommending Kevin Kitzler for the position of principal of South High School. Kevin Kitzler has 11 years of administrative experience, including elementary school principal, middle school principal, and six years as a high school administrator. He is the current co-principal of East Troy High School. At East Troy, Mr. Kitzler is leading the implementation of AVID and academic and career planning, ACP, work. He has established strong community partnerships to strengthen the CTE program and has supported students having the authentic learning experience through their agricultural program. He is known as a strong communicator with follow-through. He has high expectations for staff, students, and himself. He values building relationships with students, families, and staff while creating a learning culture where students feel safe and supported, both emotionally and academically. Mr. Kitzler received his master's of science, educational leadership and policy analysis from UW-Madison. His bachelor's of arts degree with majors in biology and educational studies is from Ripon College. Mr. Kitzler's resume and contract were provided in your packet, and a revised contract has been placed on your desk. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. I move to approve the recommendation and the contract of Kevin Kitzler for the position of principal of South High School.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Monto? Discussion?
He was also at sale this morning, but I've only had a chance to shake his hand. That was about it, so.
Yes, yes, it was great, great that both could come. Sale is at the heart of preparing what we're focused on at each of the schools, so that's where the real, I think, important work takes place. Any other comments, questions? Okay, Sue, Mrs. Reinacek?
I do have one. When we're wanting someone to stay at South finally, it just looks like he's had a lot of opportunities in lots of places, and so I'm just wondering, just curious about that. Three years here, one year here, four years, three years. Did you guys talk about that?
Yes, we did, a little bit. And Chris, would you share the comments that you made with respect to that? And I know Sharon, maybe Sharon had made the comment, but...
Yeah, well, one of the things that he said multiple times throughout the interview with the site team, without even being asked about it, I think he said that he was going, he's planning to stay there, develop deep roots, and just be there. He said that like eight times, like he really wanted to come to a high school, the land, to stay there for a while.
He does not have a superintendent's license either. Not that he can't get one, but I mean, that's, you know.
Have you gone to a different hiring strategy, Dr. Gray?
No, no, I just, I mean, unfortunately, or fortunately, I guess, we've hired really good people who've been able to take that next step up. We've, in the last 11 years, I think we have nine former administrators from this district who are now superintendents in the state. So, I mean, we've hired good people, they've gotten their superintendent's license, and obviously, they've made that next step, but hopefully, Kevin, we'll block him from getting it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on Kevin Kitzler as the new principal up at Waukesha South.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight zero. Amanda?
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for filling in tonight. Moving on to our other business, do we have any recommendations for items to agendize at the full board level or at the committee levels?
I just have one question. We have, we're forming a government relations committee out of the legislative committee, so I'm assuming that needs to go through policy?
No, it doesn't, because it's ad hoc, and I believe an ad hoc committee can be assigned by the president.
Oh, okay.
And it doesn't have to go through the formal process.
Okay.
Now, if this...
I think it makes sense to maybe make that permanent down the road, given the work we need to do, but I didn't know if we were able to convene a committee meeting without it being an official committee, but if it's an ad hoc...
Yeah, and you can check, you can check those policies on me, but I think I am correct on that.
Okay.
And make sure that I'm correct on that, so we don't do something that we shouldn't. But yeah, I mean, my intention is, is if this is something that we would like to keep around for more than a year, an ad hoc committee is typically a year, it can be multiple years too, but I think what you want to do is after a year is determine whether or not it's something that you want to have as a standard committee, and that would be the intention. Anything else? Mrs. Reinacek?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a parent ask, or talk about the vaping in the schools and how their child only has like three friends or knows three people who don't. Is there, and I've heard this multiple times, where would we or how would we know how we can just try to help? I mean, if all of our high schools and some of our middle schools have this problem, what are we doing to address that?
Well, it's treated like the same as smoking a cigarette in a school, so the same disciplinary procedures would apply. I don't know, maybe Dr. Cook can answer, but I know it is, I will say this, I do know that it's much easier to hide, and not that we're not looking for it, but it is on the same level as some of our, some of our other issues that we...
So, if they're caught with the juice or with the vape or whatever it is, and it doesn't have nicotine, it's just the juice, can we charge them with nicotine, I mean, can you still consider that a substance?
From a school discipline standpoint, yes. We have it in policy where vaping is right alongside cigarettes and any other prohibited substance from being in school. We do have it built in to our educational work that we're doing through our AODA and through our health classes, where we're trying to educate kids on it. There is no doubt that it's a problem, it's readily available to virtually everybody in the community. We are, at some locations next year, piloting vape sensors in the bathrooms, which act not quite to the same effect as a smoke detector, but similar to, where we're going to be able to detect if the vape is being used in the area. If that is effective for us, because bathrooms have been an area where kids have been using it, we'll then be exploring beyond that to see if we can expand them through our schools. You are absolutely correct, it is an issue. It keeps our high school and middle school, mostly our high school, but some of our middle school assistant principals and principals, very busy. It is an issue that Luke Pinion has been involved in through pre-expulsion. It is, it is an issue that's there. We do need the help and the partnership from our community, though, in order to address it, because, you know, whether it's, whether it has nicotine in it, whether it has THC in it, whatever it might be, it seems like it, I mean, this pen looks like a vape. Flash drives, USB drives, they look like vapes. I mean, they've made it so easy for kids to get their hands on it, it's very, very difficult for us to control in schools.
Is it treated the same, just...
We really can't discuss, like, the whole item here. If you want to have it be agendized for discussion at a particular, maybe perhaps, that policy, what I would suggest, Karen, is that you get in touch with Mr. Cook and talk with him and Bill, but we can't really go through the whole idea right now, or the discussion, as a discussion.
We'll put it on a committee-level meeting in July. Right, Joe? The other Joe?
Any other suggestions? Important point, we just can't go into details right now. Okay, all right. I don't believe we have a need for executive session, so I think we're ready to start summer. We are adjourned.
I don't wait.